Commissioner?
Morning.
Commissioner Ranzau is out of town today, taking his son to college for orientation. So, I think we can get started.
All right. Good morning, Commissioners. We have two topics today. First, we'll let Tim start with, he's going to talk a little bit about the turtle maze. There have been some questions from the Commissioners on that, so we'll get you updated on that. Second, we'll then segue into Eric Yost, where they'll talk about tax foreclosure policies and have some discussion about that. Yes, Tim?
I'm sure both topics will be equally fascinating. Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners. Today with me, I've got Annette Graham, who represents you on the Arts Council, Mark Schruf, our Park Superintendent, and we have a special guest. We have Bob Lamke that has joined us. He's retired Public Safety Director, and he's a former Arts Council Representative, and he was just integral in the development of this partnership and this project that we're going to talk about today. In 2010, in the fall of 2010, the BOCC entered into a really interesting public-private partnership with the Arts Council regarding the undeveloped area east of Sedgwick County Park and west of the zoo along 13th Street. So, there was some undeveloped land there that was identified, and the agreement called for the use of that space as an art garden, and it's now referred to as the Environmental Art Park, with artistic responsibility being given to the Arts Council. And along with that responsibility came the financial responsibility for the art projects that will be placed there. At that point in time, the Arts Council started their fundraising process for a variety of different sculpture pieces, and they approached us this last spring to talk about the implementation of the very first piece of art at the art garden. So, this first slide shows you kind of an overview of the planned park, and I'll see if I can show. So, here's 13th Street, here's the park, this is some zoo property over here. The turtle maze is very prominently displayed in the middle, and that is the first project that was, has been completed. And then there are four, five other, a total of five projects ultimately that will be done in this area. This is the completed turtle maze. This is an overhead, and I have to tell you, I've been looking at drawings of this project for, I don't know, maybe 15 months or so, and being able to see it completed, it's really pretty overwhelming. It's dramatically different than what I had envisioned initially, but it's really impressive, and this is the overhead shot. I'd like to thank our folks in Communications, Tony and John, because they were able to get a number of different photos for us. This is about 120 feet long by 70 feet, so it's a massive structure. It is ADA accessible. There's an accessible sidewalk that outlines this sculpture, and then there's a maze that leads you to kind of a prize. There's another piece of art right there in the middle. In these dark areas that you see, native grasses will grow and fill in that area. Right now, it's pretty easy to figure out the maze because you can see which, where the dead ends are, but once that grass grows up, it will be a challenge, I think, for kids and adults alike. It's going to be a fun experience for them, but everything there is ADA accessible, and so I think that's really important as well. It lets everybody in the community participate. Here's another, I've got, the next three slides, I've got some shots of this in different angles. So, here's the low angle. This is looking to the west, and you can kind of see some of the park structures there. And then this is looking to the north and that undeveloped field, and if you kind of remember where on that map this is, this is kind of the centerpiece of the art garden. And then these are some future projects that are planned. So, there's a stone man that will go just to the south of the turtle, very near the existing pathway, and the individual who did the stonework for the turtle is also the artist that's going to do the stonework for this stone man as well. There's a fish skeleton plan, that's 100, those dimensions on there, 145 feet long, 20 feet wide, and potentially up to 20 feet tall, and so that's going to be to the west of the turtle. There will be a buffalo herd. These are stone buffaloes that will be placed in a herd position, and that's going to be a little bit to the north and west of the turtle. And then, there will be totems in between the turtle and that buffalo herd, made by Gino Salerno, a local artist. And then there'll be benches in that area as well. But, these projects are all dependent upon funding, and the Arts Council, as they raise funds. If you'll remember, this particular, for the turtle maze project, the county served as the fiduciary, had fiduciary responsibility. We received money from, we received a commitment and signed a contract with the Arts Council. We paid the artist for the work, and now that the work's done and it's been signed off on by both the Arts Council and Mark, we have invoiced the Arts Council for that money, so there's no cash outlay on the county's responsibility. They've constructed this in a way that maintenance is very minimal for Mark's staff. There's no additional maintenance responsible for this, and it's a really nice feature in some undeveloped property that we had, and I think is a great addition to the community. And I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions?
A couple of questions.
Commissioner Ranzau?
So, just curious, so the, understanding that the turtle maze is done, and it's available to the public now?
That is correct.
And how long until that grass is growing up, and how tall will it get?
I think probably by the mid-fall, it should be fully developed, and somewhere between, some of it's going to be two feet tall, but two to four feet probably. I forgot to mention that I'm working with Communications right now, and they're working with the Arts Council. We plan to have a ribbon-cutting event for you later this month, so that you can officially announce it to the community that's available as well.
Very good. And so then the other four projects, right now, there's no timeline because there's not funding yet for those other four?
That's correct. I think that they believe that once we've got a finished product out there available for people to see, they believe that the funding for other projects will follow more quickly. It's one of those where, once you get one done, and people see the promise and the possibility, that the other funds will come.
Thank you.
Did we assist with the construction, or did we do it all according to plan, or did somebody else do the construction?
Somebody else did the construction. The Arts Council had identified an artist, there's a conceptual artist, and then, I don't know, a tactical artist, who actually does the stonework. So, this work was all done by a contractor, and our only involvement was to be the pass-through for the money.
Okay. And, but Mark's out there making sure they do it right?
He is.
Okay. Well, I think, seeing this, I, I, you know, early on, there were a lot of people concerned that this was establishment of a pagan artifact of some kind, and Lamke assured me he was not the high priest of that. And so, that was before I retired. So, anyway, it looks real good. I mean, it's pretty impressive.
And I don't know if anybody has any questions for Bob, but I saw Bob yesterday, and I'd been trying to figure out, how do I get ahold of him and tell him that we've reached this milestone, because it's a pretty significant milestone to have a project done now, and Bob worked very hard to get this set up, and then the Arts Council did the difficult process of getting the money available, raising the money to make it happen. But, when I saw him, I thought, well, you need to be here to take some of the credit for this.
I think it's kind of neat, we need to send something over to the Arts Council and tell them, "Thank you very much for what they've done so far in the park. We look forward to the rest of it." I think we look forward to a ribbon-cutting. We should also probably have a ribbon-cutting. I know Kate's been working on it with Vanless Placemates over there, too. So, we could probably have a couple ribbon-cuttings in Sedgwick County Park and Airfugee.
Yeah. I think that's a great idea.
Okay. Well, thank you. All right, Mr. Manager? We've got an attorney online.
I do.
Do we have a time limit?
Mr. Chairman, this next segment is going to be about tax foreclosure, and for those of you who don't know what that means, if you don't pay your property taxes over a period of time, the treasurer will, and sheriff will reach out and touch you and sell your property for the taxes. And I get a lot of questions from Commissioners about this, and I have for a couple of years. So, I ask our outside councils who handle all the tax foreclosure sales to come in and kind of talk with you about it. Part of the impetus of this was, I was approached by the finance department a couple of years ago to talk about the efficiency of what we spend versus what we raise, and what's owed, and all that. That was a very good question. So, what we did is, we took 2016, now that it is, it takes a little while after these sales to get all the little sales wrapped up. So, we've got 2016 all done and put to bed, so we will study that one year, just so you will see, you know, how it works and what kind of money we bring in. So, with that, Chris Mattlegun and Michelle Brenwell Johnson, who are the folks who handle our sales, will make a presentation to you about that, and I would urge you to jump in with any questions you've got as they go along. Do they have to take those questions?
Good. Well, we appreciate it. At one point, when I was working over in Moscow, one day, I was telling them that I owned my house, and, you know, in the communist country, why everything was kind of owned by the government. And they said, "I beg to differ with you, just don't pay your taxes and see who owns your house."
That's right.
Well, my partner, Michelle, and I really appreciate the opportunity at any time to talk about tax foreclosure. Our firm and the old apostle, like me, we've had a longstanding relationship with the county and have done and handled the outside tax foreclosure legal work for over 25 years, and I think it gives us a unique perspective. I think there's only one other lawyer, and he handles it for Reno County. He and I are the veterans, and I think he's done it for Reno County just a couple of years more than we have. But, it's a privilege to work with the great staff. We have experience with other counties, and whether or not people in Sedgwick County appreciate it. I think Sedgwick County, in my experience and the contacts that we've had, has the most professional and dedicated staff at the Treasurer's Office, at the finance folks, the Sheriff's Department, that the tax foreclosure process is not only a tax collection process, but we all, it also is a public service to provide information to folks and general taxpayers. Now, the material we sent, handed out, the main little outline provides a breakdown of the procedures, and it has some financial information that we'll go over, it's for your kind of file and reference later on. The Yellow Page is an example of the type of information that we provide taxpayers. This is what we include in all service of process, because I can tell you, in my experience, taxpayers, property owners will call county officials, the Treasurer's Office, Eric's office, and say, "Well, nobody told me this." And so, I want everyone to at least have the same reference material that we give taxpayers, because they are provided with extensive information along the way, from the very beginning through the date of sale. The other smaller white document is the announcements that we read at the sale that cover almost every issue that a new bidder, if they're successful in purchasing property, may encounter. So, we don't have citizens coming back saying, "Well, I didn't know that I went out on that property two days ago, and there was a building, but when I returned last night, the city had torn it down." And, what do I do about that? Well, we have announcements at every sale, and sometimes the announcements take longer than the sale itself, that provide people with extensive information, the handouts are given. So, we give that to you, just maybe, if you'd like, put in your files, so you have it for reference later on. In our experience, Sedgwick County, every county's a little different, or there are major differences. As you know, Sedgwick County, from a property standpoint, is much different than Johnson County or Wyandotte County. The nature of our property mix is much different, and so the realities and procedures of what Johnson County does for tax foreclosure, or Wyandotte County does, or Ford County, are different and unique, simply because of the mix of the property. In Sedgwick County, we have a challenge, because we have a core established, old, what I would say, more downtown residential areas, a core established downtown business, and then we have all the development in the outlying areas, and we have a number of small communities, municipalities, that are busy developing and establishing a relationship with developers, which lead to the imposition or assessment of special taxes, which is a unique, something unique to tax foreclosure in general, because of the realities of the loss of revenue through failed and uncompleted developments. Again, Wyandotte County doesn't have that part, but it has more of the established, older downtown, some depressed, distressed residential. And Johnson County is more the development, larger commercial tracks, and fewer, and fewer issues with regard to special tax collection. So, that kind of gives you a sense. We've broken down our presentation to kind of explain generally the process of tax foreclosure, and focusing on how much we collect, and how are the direct costs and expenses. There's no way to assess what I would call the soft costs, how much time any particular department spends exclusively on tax foreclosure. What we've assessed is, what are the direct costs? What's the legal cost, the attorney's fees? What are the different aspects, service of process, publication, and title work, and those type of things that are paid either by redeeming property owners when they pay their taxes after they become delinquent, or which, at the end of a tax foreclosure, that we collect when we sell the properties. There are two goals in tax foreclosure. Number one, to collect as much in the way of net revenue for the county. Number two, because you will never have 100% collection rate, no matter what, because property that ultimately gets sold at tax foreclosure, there's something wrong with it. It's distressed. The fair market value of that property is less than the tax burden on it. It may have had structures that have been remediated and torn down, and there are large special assessments for those costs assessed against the property. There are properties for which, I mentioned failed developments, where, again, the value of the actual lot is very small compared to the special tax levy that's been imposed on the property. And sometimes, there's just something weird. There are no heirs, and it's, believe it or not, there's a lot of property that ends up in tax foreclosure, where people have died, and there's just nobody there to take care of the property. It may have EPA problems, that's another reason why I'll go into foreclosure. So, you're never going to have close to 100% realization on your collection of taxes through the delinquent collection and foreclosure process, which leads us to the second goal. The second goal is, is for those properties, and we hate to sell property, that's, our goal is not to sell any property, or the fewest number of properties that we can. But, the second goal is, for those that are sold, the hope is that the property gets in the hands of an owner who will pay taxes in the future, and then that property becomes a tax revenue-producing piece of real estate, and perhaps the owner will upgrade it, provide development, and raise its value, and put it to economic use. And so, those are the two goals. In summary, in our analysis for 2016, after accounting for all expenses, direct expenses that are paid for the delinquent collection and tax foreclosure process, the net amount paid to the county that was collected, it was $2,680,050. That was for the one year. Every year, that's going to vary, because every year, the properties are different. Every year, we have a different mix, and we have a different number. We have a different rate of pre-sale redemptions, and we have, sometimes we sell more, and sometimes we sell less properties at sale. But, for 2016, basically, $2.7 million was ultimately paid into the county for the tax foreclosure process. Briefly to cover the collection process, because Eric wanted to make sure that everyone understood, the whole tax foreclosure, delinquent collection process does not start with the filing of a lawsuit. Starts sooner than that. And one thing to keep in mind, that in making these presentations to folks, that we always want to bear out, is that nobody likes tax foreclosure. But, the issue that you have is that if a county does not properly institute tax foreclosure proceedings every year, then the treasurer is subject to fines and ouster, and the commission is subject to fines and ouster. Now, the fines are minimal, but, and I've not known anybody to bring an ouster action, but when somebody approaches you and says, "Why are you doing this?", well, the answer is, is that the statutes require us to do this, and we have to follow, we have to follow the procedure. But, the process for delinquent taxes typically starts in August, September. For 2011, the 2011 taxes were levied in November of 2011. They have to generally be paid by May of 2012. If they're not paid in full, then they're deemed delinquent. And in July and August, the Treasurer Office prepares a roll of those properties that fall into delinquent status, and there is this kind of unique procedure under Kansas statute, in which the treasurer publishes in three consecutive weeks, a list of all the delinquent properties that have delinquencies as of 2012. So, 2011 becomes delinquent after May of 2012. The publication is deemed a delinquent tax sale, but property isn't really sold. The treasurer bids in the amount of the delinquent taxes, doing owing, on each of the parcels that are published. No one else can bid, and real estate doesn't change hands. At that point in time, the clock starts ticking for a property to ultimately end up in tax foreclosure. And as a general rule, after that September sale, the treasurer has to wait for the taxes to be unpaid for three consecutive years after that, before the property becomes eligible. So, by 2015, because we got 2012 to 13, 13 to 14, to 14 to 15, in the fall of 2015, taxes with, I'm sorry, property with taxes doing owing from 2011 are, were eligible for tax foreclosure, and the process starts. A list is prepared, and that's when we start getting involved. The list is prepared of all eligible properties. We work through that list, because there are some unique issues with certain properties, like reserves, there's bankruptcies, those type of things where we know the property may not be eligible for tax foreclosure because of different reasons. That list is then, in October, September, October, is provided to our title company. And under Kansas law, we're required to get a title report, it's called an abstract in the statute, but it's not an abstract, it's a title report, for each parcel, and it identifies every person, or company, or entity that possibly could have a claim or interest in that property, a lien, a judgment lien, other tax liens, federal government, IRS, people that hold interests, maybe arising out of divorce proceedings. So, there are, sometimes can be up to 25 people or parties that are identified in the title work. We take the title work, then, and we're talking about, we start between, with 1,800 to 2,000 parcels typically, and then that kind of gets boiled down. At that point in time, then, the attorney's fees, which we are paid, $135 per parcel. That's the sum total of the fees that we are paid. What we provide is a little unique. As part of our engagement with Eric's office, we provide all tax foreclosure legal work, whatever we're asked to do. We're, throughout the year, we'll consult, we'll go to meetings, we'll get, we participate in intergovernmental meetings. I know some of the Commissioners have been to the Blight meetings that we've had, we attend those. We handle any type of court challenge. Whatever we're called on to do throughout the year, we do it, we perform those services, even though they're not directly related to a tax foreclosure action. So, the idea is, out of the tax foreclosure process, the fees paid to our firm on a per-parcel basis, then fund all of the, fund all of the representation that we provide, and it's good for us, because there's consistency. There's consistency. And we handle all post-foreclosure challenges. If there's an appeal, motions, regardless of when it, what case it relates to, then we handle all of that. And so, that's the attorney-client engagement that we have with the county. The title company gets $105 per title report, and that's done by bid, and, excuse me, that goes out every year. And then, there's an additional amount of money that varies from year to year, and it is for general court costs. And I think it was $120 for the 2016 tax foreclosures. And that offsets, goes to help offset publication costs, postage, copying, pays for the court filing fee, helps pay for the auctioneer. It doesn't pay those costs 100%, but it goes to offset those costs. So, the property gets identified for tax foreclosure. Under statute, then, the treasurer posts the attorney fee of $135, the title work fee of $105, and then the court cost fee. And so, at that point in time, when a taxpayer comes in before, even before the tax foreclosure action is actually filed, under the statute, they have to pay the taxes to avoid the property being included in the case, and ultimately sold. They have to pay their delinquent taxes, and then they also have to pay on top of that, those costs, those expenses, which are the direct result, the direct cost of the county for this taxpayer not staying current on their property. And so, the goal, under the statutory structure in the arrangement with Sedgwick County that has and has put in place, is that we try to shift the cost, direct cost and expenses of tax foreclosure and delinquent tax collection, as allowed by statute, to the property owners who do not stay current on their properties. And therefore, it's not a drain, at least those direct expenses aren't a direct drain on anyone's budget, on anyone's budget. Once we identify, we'll have this, we'll have this boiled down to about 1,500 parcels on average, that are going to be actively involved. The first step, and this is not required by statute, but the treasurer does it as an accommodation, the first step in giving notice to property owners is a warning letter. The warning letter goes out to everybody whose property is under threat of tax foreclosure. It identifies the property, identifies the taxes that must be paid, and gives notice to the taxpayer that if you don't get this taken care of, ultimately, a lawsuit's going to be filed. Under Kansas law, prior to the lawsuit being filed, a taxpayer only has to pay the taxes which trigger tax foreclosure. So, in the 2016 scenario, a taxpayer can avoid tax foreclosure by coming in prior to the cases being filed, and paying their 2011 taxes, which were delinquent, and make it, make the property eligible for tax foreclosure, plus the redemption costs, which are the costs that we just talked about. So, there's an advantage to get these people in and get them to pay those initial years. If they don't, and we file a case that includes their parcel, then they have to pay all years. They have to pay 2011, 12, 13, 14, 15. Okay? So, and it gives the property owners notice. Now, the treasurer has what we call frequent flyers. There are many people that wait till they get the warning letter, and they wait till the last possible moment to pay that one year. And that's just, that's just kind of a reality. But, the problem is, they may not time it right, the property gets in a case, and then they're upset because they have to pay all of the delinquent taxes. And I know everyone's probably, that has any type of touch and feel with tax foreclosure, have gotten those calls from those owners that say, "I've always done it this year, but this year I missed the deadline. Can you help me out?" That's the first step.
The answer to that is no.
The answer to that is no. The answer to that is no. The problem, one of the other problems, not problems, but one, this is not a mortgage foreclosure or a debt collection action. No one has personal liability for taxes. We cannot sue the individual and say, and take a judgment for $1,000, and then go out and garnish their bank accounts or something like that. Your sole source of collection is the property, and that's why you have shortfalls, because it's the nature and value of that property that ultimately will drive whether you get lots of redemptions prior to sale, and that, and what do you get for the properties when it's sold. Counties, the treasurer, the board is strictly prohibited from abating, forgiving, or waiving the ad valorem property taxes. And so, it's easy, because people call us and say, "Hey, I want to work out a deal", well, we can't work out a deal. The only exception, the only exception is if the properties are in bankruptcy, if the owner's in bankruptcy. And then, the Kansas statute allows someone in bankruptcy to negotiate with Eric's office, come up with a plan to abate, to abate, or forgive, or work out the taxes, doing owing on that piece of property. An agreement is reached, and there are some standard procedures and guidelines that are followed. I believe that comes for the board typically, if it reaches a certain level. I'm not involved in that, but there, I believe that there is some, in some instances, board approval or consideration. Again, I may be incorrect on that, but I believe that is in some instances. And then, it goes to the Board of Tax Appeals, and the Board of Tax Appeals has 30 days, I believe, Trish, 30 days in which to reject it. If it's not rejected, then it's approved. So, they either approve it, or do nothing, or reject it, but they have to reject it in order, in 30 days, in order for the deal not to be approved. order, in 30 days in order for the deal not to be approved. That's really the only exception. There is one limited exception in which a municipality who has petition specials on property can waive those specials that are delinquent. That is not typically done. I haven't seen it done in my experience. Sometimes there's a workout where they delay the collection, but that doesn't involve us. That involves the municipalities that have petition specials. So the notice goes out, then we divide, after the warning letters go out, we divide the parcels into three cases. Each have, each case has between 300 to 500 parcels depending upon how many we have to disclose or foreclose upon. And in 2016, we ultimately filed on 1,112 parcels divided up into three cases. Then, just like any lawsuit, petitions are prepared, service starts, we, and we'll talk a little bit about service. But on page four of our outline, we've identified the direct costs and expenses that are identified that come out of either pre-sale redemptions, the taxpayer owns, redeems the property up to the morning of the sale, and then the tax, these expenses that aren't paid that then come out of the sheriff's sale proceeds. And the four major ones are the title reports, the attorney's fees that we also talked about, service of process fees, publication notice costs, and then there are some general expenses. Those are the five major ones. We've already talked about title reports and the attorney's fees. Let's talk a little bit about service of process, which actually is the most important thing I think that we handle. Service of process means how do we give notice to our constituent taxpayers that there's a tax foreclosure action and their property is under threat? It's also constitutionally required as part of due process. We have to put a summons in that person's hands or we have to tack it through their door and mail them a notice. We have to use all means available to find their addresses and we have to publish various notices. We employ, our firm employs a special process server that only works, he works exclusively for us, no one else. He's at our beck and call. We've trained him specifically for tax foreclosure so that he can explain to people, hey, what's going on because the questions we get, what is this? And so he's in a position to have a dialogue with the people that he serves. He's a retired battalion chief and fireman in Sedgwick that worked for the city know where every address in Sedgwick County is. So he's very proficient at that. The reason why we use a special process server is that we totally control the schedule because we have to complete all three cases and go to sale and complete all sales by the end of August. Now, sometimes we slop over to the first week or two of September. But the process needs to be done, so ultimately deeds get issued, the tax rules get changed. So when the tax notices go out in the next December, they go to the right people. We typically are able to get process served within 60 days and complete that process. I can tell you that in 2016, in one case, our process server successfully served 721 summons in 60 days. And that also takes a burden off of the sheriff department, officers that have, that handle civil service of process because they don't have to deal with that. Again, we exclusively control that. We can call our process server anytime, night and day, and he'll get out and catch somebody and get them served. We, an expense of $45 special process server fee for every summons successfully served is paid. And that is the standard low cost in Sedgwick County for private special process servers. We do a survey and see what are the range and then we peg that number. It also, private special process servers also typically charge mileage. The mileage is not charged back as part of the foreclosure cost. It's only the $45 per summons. Why it's important is that, again, it's a constitutional due process requirement. And number two, the most expensive and frustrating problems with tax foreclosures is after we sell the property, a taxpayer comes in and says, "I wasn't served. Set aside the sale, pay the money back to the purchaser and give me my property back." Since we've employed, 10, 12 years ago started using special process server that we exclusively hired, we probably have in any given year, no more than two or three motions to set aside in total. And the fact that we foreclosed on over 11, in 2016, over 1,100 parcels, it's kind of testament that, hey, our citizens are getting notice. Our citizens are getting notice. And of those three or four, none of them were successful. None of them were successful. There was never a finding that our service was inadequate. Sometimes things get set aside because the new owner says, "Hey, I'm fine with it. Give these people their property back as long as I get my purchase price back." But we've been pretty successful in preserving and protecting the service of process. We also have to, and to give an idea, we talked about the petition. This is what a tax foreclosure petition looks like. This is all the information, it's duplexed, all the information and all the parties. This is the document that we have to physically serve either by certified mail or personal delivery to property owners, lien holders, anyone that showed up on the title work. So that kind of gives you an idea of the information and the number of parties that we have to provide due process. Under Kansas law, we also have to publish a notice of suit. And it's a publication that basically gives notice, hopefully gives notice to the world, identifies all the properties and all the parties and says, "Hey, there's a tax foreclosure action and you need to get in if you want to protect your property or you want to protect your lien and file an answer or do something." And it's published in newspaper three times in three consecutive weeks. So the same day for three consecutive weeks. The official newspaper for Sedgwick County business is the Daily Derby and Former. We publish there. We also publish notice of suit in the Eagle. Why do we do that? The judges love it. Because when we go in and we say, "Here is all the notice that we give a taxpayer," they get the warning, well, they, first of all, they get their tax bills. Number two, they get their warning letter. That's an accommodation. That's not even required by statute. And then we serve. And we serve everybody at every, we may have seven addresses for one person. We serve at every address to make sure that we hit the right one if it's available. We publish notice of suit in the two newspapers in Sedgwick County that would probably give us the best exposure throughout the county. And we also mail a copy of the notice of suit to everyone that we have an address for. Now, we've gone above and beyond what the statute requires, above and beyond what state law requires, and so we can go to court and we have pretty good rulings and the judges understand this is what we've done. And we typically get rulings that the county has provided more process, more constitutional protections that are due than the law requires. So that's why we go to the added step and publish in the two, what I consider to be the major newspapers in Sedgwick County. Now, those costs, there's cost to that and again, those are paid out of the tax foreclosure sale and as part of the redemption costs that a taxpayer pays when he or she pays the delinquent taxes. After the notice of suit goes out, we enter, we deal with anyone who files an answer. We get judgment entered that sets the amount of the county's lien, cost, and everything that we're going to try to collect at sale. And then a notice of sale is published. And the notice of sale identifies each and every parcel that is still in the case because people have come in and hopefully when they get served, another reason why we try to give more notice than was required, people get knowledge, they come in and pay the delinquent taxes and they pay the redemption cost and we don't sell their property. So that's another reason why we try to go to a little bit extra lengths to give people notice. And so the notice of sale is also published in both newspapers. And again, at that point in time, we want to get, give a last chance notice to anyone who might have an interest in the property. And then it gives greater exposure to people to come and bid at the sales. And sometimes we'll have over 200 people bidding at a sale or attending a sale. They're done at the Sedgwick County Extension Office. And if you've never been to one, they're very interesting. And I encourage you, come for one, just one sale. You'll see a broad, complete spectrum of our community and there are some very interesting people. And the other reason why you ought to come to a sale if you have a chance is to see our county departments coordinating and doing the great job that they do to administer the sale. Michelle and I, we attend, we read the announcement that we've given you, we answer questions, but the hard work is done by the sheriff's department, finance department, the IT folks. I'm probably missing some people, but there's a whole army that participate to make sure the sale goes smoothly because we'll sell hundreds of pieces of property. It's a cash in hand bid. They have to pay for their parcels before they leave. And there are AV materials, there are map books, and so it's quite a production and it's well-handled by your staff and the sales have improved since that process has started. Once the money's collected, the sheriff files a return, the money is deposited, we go to the court and get the sale confirmed. We have to show the judge that we satisfied all legal requirements. The court approves all the fees and costs and expenses that are paid. And at that point in time, then the sale's confirmed and the sheriff starts a process of preparing deeds. And the deeds are sent out to the various purchasers. When they get their deed, it's already been recorded, so they don't have to do anything else. And all of the redemption costs that we talked about that are paid, those are paid at the treasurer's office. The treasurer takes the taxes and deals with the taxes as if there was no tax foreclosure action. But the redemption costs that a taxpayer pays are held and segregated, then ultimately deposited in the district court. And so from the sale proceeds and the redemption costs, then all the fees and expenses and costs of the tax foreclosure are paid. And then the net taxes that go to the county are paid and at that point in time, essentially the case is concluded. Now, at page 10, we start with the financial analysis and again, we provided a lengthy, there's a lot more details, but I wanted to try and provide you an overview of the process because it does put the financial analysis in perspective. We provided you the number for each case, the net taxes that were collected and paid to the county that go into that $2.7 million figure. We started the process with 112 parcels and at the end of the day, we only sold 388 in three cases. So that gives you kind of, you know, everyone, there's some bankruptcies that get filed and we have to pull the parcels out, but that gives you an idea of what type of the redemption rate that we get where people actually come in and pay the taxes and the costs and keep the property out of tax foreclosure. So we sell, we sold about 130 parcels in each case on average. On page 11, 12, and 13, we provide a breakdown for each case. And I want to explain it generally. In each one of these tables, we've identified the case number and then the top section provides information for pre-sale redemptions. And this gives you an idea of what taxes were paid by taxpayer prior to the tax foreclosure sale. So this covers everything that starts from the warning letter up to the day of sale. Who's come in and paid the delinquent taxes, paid the redemption costs. The redemption costs again are on top of the taxes that are paid. And that gives you an idea, there were, the gross funds were 536,000 and change and then along with all of the attorney's fees, title report fees and court fees that were paid on top of that. So the taxes actually paid in redemptions prior to sale were $453,799. And then the sheriff's sale proceeds section tells you, okay, what did we collect and what were the expenses when we actually sold the property? And again, you can see how that breaks out. The excess funds to owners, what happens is that the Kansas Court of Appeals has approved a formula by which we spread the costs across all the parcels. And parcels that, some parcels bring more than what's doing owing in the taxes. And so some of the costs are assessed to those parcels under this formula, but ultimately there's always a modest amount of money that may go back to lien holders and tax owners, taxpayers, property owners for property which bring more at sale than the taxes and costs that get assessed. That's held in court until someone comes in and makes a motion to get those proceeds paid out. Ultimately, in a few years, then ultimately, those funds will go to the state unclaimed property division. But they're held to make sure there are, for a period of time, to make sure there aren't any challenges by people who are seeking to set aside a sale. So ultimately, the gross sale receipts were 483,000. The net taxes paid from the sale to the county were $230. And so the total taxes collected and paid for that case were about $660,000. And so the same, and the same information is provided for each case. And there's about 750,000 in the second case and the last case was 1.2 million dollars. And those, again, that all makes up the 2.7 million that were paid into the county. Page 14 then has a table that basically gives you, in one snapshot, a total report of the taxes paid out of each case, both pre-sale redemption and from the sale proceeds and the net amount paid. Okay, what is the rest of the picture? What was the next net tax loss? What was, what escaped collection because we had to sell property? Again, we talked a little bit about it's unavoidable because of the condition of the property or its situation or the attributes. The shortfall, let's say we have a piece of property that has $10,000 worth of taxes and that parcel goes for $500. We're required by statute to sell it off to the highest bidder. The property's distressed. It's got all kinds of problems. It has no fair market value of any substance. It is sold for $500 and has $10,000 of general and special taxes. Whatever is not collected through the process is written off and ultimately escaped. And that's under Kansas law. There's nothing we can do about it. We can't go collect the shortfall from any owner or interest owner in the property. It's just simply escaped collection. Now, for 2016, and we have this information summarized on page 15, for 2016, the gross delinquent taxes, this is what we started, this is the nest egg that we started. If we had 100% collection, we would have collected 3.5 million dollars of delinquent taxes. That's what we started with. After sale and deducting all direct fees and costs and expenses that we've just discussed in detail, the shortfall was $866,000. All right? That's what was escaped and we weren't able to collect either through pre-sale redemptions or the sheriff's sale. But we need to put that shortfall in some perspective, at least for Sedgwick County. The majority of these lost taxes are delinquent specials, special taxes, not general taxes. These are special, for the most part, the county does not control the assessment and levying of the special taxes. And by the best that we could calculate, $685,000 of the $866,000 shortfall is attributable to special taxes that weren't collected through the process. So 181,000 was the general taxes that we lost that escaped collection. Now, to give you an idea, the large amount of special taxes that escaped collection is expected because generally the special taxes are greater than the generals often, plus a property that goes into tax foreclosure with high specials typically has low value. For instance, a piece of property has structures on it that are dilapidated, they get condemned. City of Wichita goes out and demolishes and scrapes the property. The standard special tax assessment for that demolition can range from $7,000 to $20,000 or more depending upon what type of remediation. There's environmental remediation or the structure is large. That special tax assessment can be significant. That becomes a lien on the property and is part of the total amount of taxes that we have to attempt to collect. Well, a vacant lot with a $20,000 remediation demolition special assessment is not going to sell for much. Sometimes parcels like that will go for $50, but we have no choice. We have to sell them. So you can see that that loss is, it could be significant, but it's not a loss of attributable to general ad valorem property taxes. One problem that we've historically had in Sedgwick County is failed development. There's a developer that's put a residential development... There's a developer that's put a residential development in one of our bedroom communities and then has gone defunct. The development is failed, only half of the property is actually developed, but as part of that development, the developer has gone to the municipality and petitioned for special taxes to pay for all the improvements, the guttering, the road, the water mains, the common areas, and those type of things. As those specials become liens on the property, we have to collect them as part of the process. Well, the developer fails, and there are a number of vacant undeveloped lots that can have, again, up to $20,000 of delinquent special taxes on these undeveloped lots. So again, the value of the vacant lot is not enough to collect the general taxes and the special taxes, so ultimately, there's a shortfall in revenue due to the fact that there is a large special assessment that far outstrips the fair market value of the property. Now, the hope is that those vacant lots in the development will get into the hands of new builders, they'll finish the construction, they'll sell those lots, and the future specials that have not yet become liens will ultimately get paid. And we struggle sometimes with communications with our municipalities because they want these parcels with specials to be foreclosed upon as quick as possible. Well, the problem is that statutorily, we have to wait three years, in some instances, we can do it in two years. Ultimately, that becomes four or five years by the time the sale takes place. It's frustrating, but there's nothing that we can do about it unless the statute changed. So that kind of gives you an idea that, we looked at one case, forgive me, in one 2016 case, we sold at least 74 parcels of vacant land in failed developments. These parcels sold for bids between $200 to $900, but the losses on the parcels ranged from $1,500 to $7,100 per parcel because of the special assessments, special taxes assessed on that property that ultimately weren't collected. Now, one of the problems with specials is the way, and again, it's a part of the foreclosure process that we don't have a lot of involvement in, but Linda probably can explain it a little bit better, but all those tax proceeds then that are net taxes paid out of the tax sale to the treasurer's office, then the treasurer's office has to process, well, how do we account for the shortfall because all those taxes are on the tax rolls that get forgiven? There is a formula, and I don't know if it's exactly prorated, but every taxing unit then gets a prorated share of the proceeds. And so one of the problems that is a reality is that if there are high delinquent specials on a failed development, what happens is the money that has to go to pay those actually eats on the general ad valorem property taxes that are ultimately paid to the various municipalities and other taxing units. So it's a reality of development in Cedric County, it's kind of a good thing, there are a lot of developments, but the dark side is when one of these developers fails, then it affects the entire process and affects our tax collection, and it's unavoidable. It's just really unavoidable. So I know that I've taken a long time, I've talked a lot, some of us are nodding off because it's not the most exciting, I'll talk for hours on tax foreclosure, but I'm a nerd, but in any event, if anyone has any questions or discussions, we're here to answer in the end, at any time, if anyone has questions. On an ongoing basis, we're always available to help and discuss and meet, and again, we love to talk about tax foreclosure, the more that everyone knows, the easier our job is, and the better relationships that you have with citizens. I can tell you that we approach this as that we're an arm of the county, we're providing a service to the taxpayers also. So we'll get, especially after we file a lawsuit, the initial filing, and then right before sale, we'll get anywhere from 50 to 75 phone calls in a single day, and we deal with those, we try to get them all returned, some people are impatient, but we have two other staff people that help us with that, and we spend a lot of time explaining the process, advising these people the best we can, we can't give them legal advice, but there's a lot of interaction. So the more information you all have, the easier it makes our job.
Any questions from the commissioner?
I have several.
Commissioner Hatlen.
Thank you very much for the presentation, you're a fascinating speaker, and I would like you to say everything all over one more time. I'll just watch the video so you know I can do that again.
My apologies.
It's really a really great presentation, but I do have a couple of questions. On the notification that you send out, if you go to the person's house and you knock on the door and they don't answer the door, do you just put that on the front door, and how do you know they got it?
We don't, and here's what we're required to do by statute. That's called residential tack the door. Our process server will go back three and four times, okay, to try and catch the people at home. He'll knock on the doors, the neighbors, and see if he can get some information. Property might be vacant and you can't really tell. Person may be, we have people that are deployed, and we're always concerned about somebody on deployment, those type of things. So we go back three or four times, we go back and we double check the address. If that's an address that we have, then we have to resort to what's called residential tack the door. We don't actually tack it, sometimes they'll tape it, sometimes they'll put it in between the storm door and the main door, maybe have to leave it under a flower pot. Then he comes back and he takes photographs of all the vehicles typically, if he's really concerned, he'll take photographs of the vehicles that are parked around, get their tag numbers, because maybe we can get a little information, and then we can always recreate and tell the court, hey, this is what we did to try to find this person. Then, Commissioner, we are required to mail by regular mail a letter saying that on this day, in this case, the process server went to this resident at this address and left a copy, and then we also include another copy of the petition in the letter, which, again, we're not required by statute, but again, it's a different effort. Also have to be mindful is that we do mail additional notices by mail to that address. But at the end of the day, if we can never catch somebody home at an address after several attempts, then we do leave it on the porch, leave it in the door, do what we can to at least try, as required by statute, to provide notice.
So I used to have a comment, I guess maybe you can comment back on it.
Sure.
But there was a case a while back, and I'm sure you probably are familiar with the case, there was a Vietnamese family in my district that has a language barrier, they don't read or speak English, and I think they received the notifications and didn't have a clue what they were looking at. They didn't realize it was a legal document, didn't realize it was important for them to understand it, so they basically disregarded the notification, they didn't get it, and ultimately that house went to foreclosure, was sold. And I'm going to just ballpark it, $150,000 home, they just put about $50,000 into the home that year, they had the money to pay their taxes, they just, I think taxes to them was a cultural thing, they don't understand it, because I think they actually paid off their mortgage, and in doing so, they paid off their escrow, there was no more escrow, so the taxes weren't being paid. And that's the genesis of the whole problem, is a cultural issue, and thankfully, they were able to go to district court and got it set aside, and they were successful in doing that, and I had to get involved at least a little bit to give them some idea how to do that, how to follow that process, but I am concerned about the language barrier. You know, if someone doesn't speak or read English and everything trying to communicate to them is in English, then how do we know that they're, because they're US citizens, but they just don't read or speak English? What do we do?
That is a good example of kind of the unique situations in tax foreclosure, and there are some others that I'll mention after this, but you hit the facts of that case, that situation, right on the head. And we went to district court, and we coordinated with those folks' lawyer, and the one thing that we tried to do, and we're going to ultimately get a Vietnamese translation, but the yellow page that I gave you is what we include, this duplicate page with every summons that we serve. We also have it in Spanish, so we provide it in Spanish and English. We haven't provided it in Vietnamese, we plan to do that by next year's sales. So we hope to do something proactive. Second, when we went to court, we explained the situation, and my goal was, Judge, this is what we did, and we did everything and went above and beyond what we're required by statute and constitutional requirements of due process. However, in this case, we've given notice to the person that purchased the property. They've not appeared and they have not objected. I said, from the county's perspective, since these people are standing ready, willing, and able to pay the taxes and all the costs, and apparently the new property owner has not appeared although they have gotten notice, then it would be fair to enter an order that allows for the sale to be set aside, these poor folks can come in and pay the taxes and the costs, the new property owner gets paid in full for their purchase, and we worked that out. Now, unfortunately, Kansas law says it doesn't matter what's equitable in tax foreclosure. You can't set aside, equity has no role in setting aside a tax sale. But we try to do the best we can to coordinate and mediate between the new owner and the folks that are trying to save the property, set aside the sale because of unique situations like that. And fortunately, we were able to get that done. So I want you to appreciate that this isn't like the big bad tax man and tax lady are out there kicking people out of property, putting them, you know, doing things like that. We do everything we can to reach an equitable resolution, and sometimes, again, we become kind of the mediators, the Henry Kissinger with shuttle diplomacy between the new purchaser and the distressed owner. And we are, from time to time, always going to have that problem, we're trying to be proactive, and we greatly appreciate, Commissioner, you called me, we talked about it, so when this was filed, I knew exactly what we were doing, and we were able to fortunately still get the ruling that was right, our process was correct. Whether someone is sufficiently proficient in English is not a due process consideration under the law, unfortunately, however you would view that, but at the end of the day, we able to work it out. One of the situations we have is husband and wife. Husband always takes care of the property taxes, wife, spouse doesn't know anything, husband dies, spouse continues to live in the property, taxes aren't paid. All of a sudden, she's hit with the tax notice, had no idea, and again, we do everything we can. Typically, those people, we find out before we go to sale, and we're able, we don't forgive the taxes or anything like that, but there's some arrangements can be made that where they pay the oldest years, the delinquent years, we make sure we get them referred. One thing, we have a group of lawyers that we refer to that are experienced in these areas to help folks out. So again, if anyone comes and tells you that the heartless treasurer's office and attorneys were kicking them out of their property, we do go, and the treasurer goes to great lengths to try, and the sale of the property is a last resort, but unfortunately, there's always going to be an inequity that we have to either try to work, and sometimes we're not able to under the law.
I appreciate you working with that in that case, and I think that it ended up with a good conclusion, but I do have a large Vietnamese population in my district, and language is a concern. I know there's parts of the city that have lots of Hispanic people, and so that's a concern as well, and I think maybe there's people with disabilities that maybe can't see or can't have the intellect maybe to understand what they're seeing because it's a legal document perhaps, and so I am concerned about due process in those situations, but nevertheless, that particular one turned out great. Probably the proudest moment in my entire first term was that situation, because it turned out okay, but it was a really bad situation. They did understand the vacation, or they had to vacate the property, they understood that one because it was different for some reason, they got that one, but that's when they got involved in, I was able to get involved in that case a little bit. Another question I would have, out of $181.9,000 uncollected or lost revenue, if you will, it might be a good report for jurisdictions to receive a report once a year and say, here's how much money you've lost as a result, because they know this is a collective amount for all jurisdictions, correct?
Right, that would be distributed to the taxing unit.
So just to ask, we're collecting around $130 million in property taxes for Cedric County, but out of us, for our percentages, again, this isn't a percentage of loss, because again, this represents all jurisdictions, you guys all together, entire taxing system, and maybe Linda knows this, entire taxing system tried to collect, you know, how much money overall, it wasn't just for Cedric County, but it was for all the cities as well, and so this represents a fairly small percentage of revenue lost, but I'd like to know what that percentage is. And so for us, I could take that percentage and say, our dollar figure, and say, out of roughly $130 million we tried to collect, or we think we tried to levy those taxes, we lost, you know, $25,000 or something, but whatever that number is, it'd be nice for us to see those numbers.
I think we can ultimately work with Linda's office and get that. Several years ago, with the new computer processes that were put in place, I think the ability to refine some of the report, we had to kind of customize them, to get some of these numbers, we had to customize them, some work, and her staff did a really good job, and now I think we're in a position where we can provide this on an annual basis once everything's complete, and I'm pretty sure we can come to at least an estimate of what did the school district lose? What did the township lose?
That'd be a tremendous, by the way, tremendous report, I'm going to read it when I get a chance here, but great report, I appreciate having this presentation today. My final question really is, maybe it's a two-part question, but is there something in our tax laws that you would recommend in Kansas that we should change? Because I've heard that we have a very gracious tax system in terms of, it's very patient, we let people, the bad players out there, you used to frame, the frequent flyer people that abuse that tax grace, and so do you believe we ought to change our tax laws? I guess I see this as a pipeline, and ultimately, if we get down to, say, $25,000, let's say it's $25,000 that we lost in tax revenue, for set 2016, let's just say, that's a pretty small percentage of the $130 million we tried to collect. So to me, I don't think we have a problem to solve, is my opinion, but there may be people out there that don't like the fact that our frequent flyers out there are abusing that system, and I guess my opinion is if we were to ratchet that down and shorten that pipeline down the road, we may not actually have any better performance, but you end up being a lot less gracious to people in the process, and there are some people out there that are victims of a, maybe they don't have the dollars for whatever reason, and I don't want to be aggressive taking the property away. So I guess, from my perspective, I don't see that there's a problem to solve, but I'd like to hear it from you, see what you think.
I get asked that question all the time, and I can tell you, we can tell you, we have a much better system than perhaps in other states where they just actually sell the tax liens, and then whoever buys the tax liens go out and foreclose. I don't think that that's good government. The one thing that you should keep in mind when you're considering that is, yes, for instance, we explained for 2011 taxes, we had to wait three years after September of 2012. What you don't see in that is that typically, the 2011 weren't paid, but the 2012 aren't paid, the 2013 aren't paid, 14 and 15, then the frequent flyer comes in and tries to pay that oldest year, doesn't pay the other year. So there's that huge, what I would call bottleneck, significant bottleneck in immediate revenue that's not collected. I think the only thing that can be done, Commissioner, I don't think that it's probably a good policy decision to compress homestead. I mean, we're all sensitive to that, and the legislature is starting to compress the time for properties that aren't homestead, which would be commercial properties or vacant properties with general specials, down to a two-year, so we kind of reduce that bottleneck. At the end of the day, you're not going to probably get, your distressed property is going to be distressed property, and you're always going to take a loss. There's always going to be failed developments, you're always going to take a loss. I think the opportunity that's escaped in those taxes that are in the interim between current and delinquent, but from my perspective, I don't think that there's really a lot that should be changed unless you make a conscious decision that we're going to be, and heartless isn't the right term, but more blindly aggressive to situations like the one that you and I worked on with the Vietnamese family. That's the trade-off. You get more aggressive, property owners have fewer rights, and you're going to be ultimately probably foreclosing on more property, might ultimately end up even in greater loss, you know, it'd be difficult to incubate that until you do. Michelle, what do you think of that?
So I was just going to add that the real issue, just to clarify how the process works, like Chris said, the delinquent taxes start back in 2011, and then they become delinquent as of May of 2012. And what happens is, just to clarify, and I think Chris has already made this point, that the homeowner or property owner, whether it's commercial or residential, can come in and just pay that last year, that oldest year that is due, to remove it from eligibility. And so I can come in in 2015, right before, when I get the first notice from Linda that says, hey, you have 11, 12, 13, 14... says, hey, you have 11, 12, 13, 14, and we're coming up on 15, we're going to file a lawsuit on you here in the next couple of months, come in and pay your taxes. At that point, when they get that notice, they can actually come in and only pay the oldest year, and all of a sudden, it is now removed from eligibility and it drops off the list. The frequent flyer issue comes when, when we have lots of people that do that, people that have a lot of rental properties, people that have commercial property with an extensive amount of liens assessed against them. They come in on that very last day, and they say, okay, I'm going to pay just one year, and then we, that pipeline stays full. But then they come in the next year when we roll into 17, and when we roll into 18, and they come in and they pay that oldest year. So they are never actually catching up on their taxes, they're just paying that oldest year to get it out of eligibility of the tax foreclosure action. And I know Linda has frustration with that, and she expresses that, like, oh, that guy came in, he paid that oldest year, what can we do? And he said, well, he's now, he's not eligible now, so he won't be included in the lawsuit. What we do try to do when we know that those frequent flyers on the list, and bear in mind, you know, we've got 1,500 parcels that we're usually looking at at the beginning of our proceedings, we, we know them sadly, we know who they are, we go, oh, he's back in again, he's back in again. And we do try to push some of those, especially on the commercial properties, they're just carrying hundreds of thousands of dollars of taxes. We try to push them early into the first case or the second case, even if they're not initially divided up that way. So that way, we can kind of seize them. And it does make people mad because they come in and they say, hey, I used to always pay my oldest year, and that pulled me out of tax foreclosure. And we would say, well, you've got the luck of the draw that your properties were ending up in case two or case three, which are, which come later, because we file them about two to three months apart. But you're in case one now, and you've already been filed on, so now you have to come in and pay all of your taxes. And so we, you know, it's not a perfect system, but it's what we can do to try to address the abusers of this system that really just don't want to come and pay their taxes. And truly, it is, it's the, it's the people that we know. They show up every year, they've got, you know, 50 rental properties, they don't ever want to pay the full amount of taxes, or they've got several commercial properties, and they don't want to pay the full amount of taxes on them.
It's the same phenomenon that you and I have sat in on some Blight meetings over the city. It's the same thing. It's the same, you know, it's doing the minimum to satisfy either, you know, central inspection or the treasurer's office. The one thing that has been done fairly recently is it used to be that, that up until judgment, some properties could be redeemed by only paying that oldest year or the delinquent years that triggered the tax foreclosure. Now, once the case is filed, once the case is filed, then that oldest year option is gone, and there has to be a total payment of everything due. So that's, that assists a little bit. But I don't think a major overhaul, it's, it's like pressing a balloon. You're going to get good things here, then you're, but you're going to get bad things here. And I'm not, it'll take somebody a lot smarter than me to figure out where is that balance where we satisfy everybody's interest if we change our system.
Along with that report we talked about earlier, it might be nice to see the total magnitude of the pipeline and how it changes year to year, and then how much of that share, how much of their share of that revenue that's in that pipeline belongs to each jurisdiction. Again, to me, it's just, it's important to see that because the idea that there's, you know, $7 million in the pipeline, it's not $7 million to the county, it's $7 million in the total pipeline for every jurisdiction. So the county may be $1 million in the pipeline, we're going to collect most of that before it even gets to the, to the lawsuit, right? So, and also, and I guess my final question would be this, even if someone does pay that oldest year, and they're the, they're the bad, they're the bad taxpayer that does the very minimum, okay? They're doing this intentionally, and it's an abuse. And let me say, if we did shorten that pipeline, we would have a windfall of revenue suddenly. The politicians could spend that quickly, but you're right back in the same game very quickly. But having said that, if someone does pay the oldest year, isn't there an interest charge on that, on the, what is the, so again, they don't get, they don't get use of money for that without interest.
No, it's not interest-free, and that's all calculated in the treasurer's office, and I don't know what that rate is, maybe Linda knows that.
It'd be good to know that rate of interest. And so, again, so if someone wants to be the bad, the bad taxpayer, they're going to pay more money for those taxes. They're going to have interest on their taxes.
When we, we initially begin our foreclosure proceedings, we get all those reports from the treasurer's office, which show it's broken down by year, the actual amount of tax, the actual amount of the interest charged, and there's usually a $16 fee, annual fee that's assessed against the property as well. And oftentimes, you will see those abusers, the ones that are using us as a funding system for their, for their properties, that they owe a lot more in interest than sometimes they even owe in taxes.
Those are my questions. Thank you, Chairman.
The one, the one thing to keep in mind, as I said here, I think the one thing that might improve is if there was a greater ability for the county to have a system where there's an actual abatement for properties that have delinquent taxes, that for whatever reason, you know that you're not going to, you know you're not going to ever bring it up at sale to satisfy that lien. So does it make, does it make better sense to be able to negotiate down, come up with a, a plan where all of our constituent taxing authorities basically take a percentage reduction? But at the end, if that taxpayer or property owner can pay the taxes, we generally collect more revenue than, than at a forced sale. That, and as I'm sitting here thinking, that would be the one improvement that I would, that I would suggest. The problem that you have is you have to have restrictions and standards so there's not abuses.
Correct.
Okay. Other questions?
A developer can't come in and bid on his own delinquent property.
Right. If you look at the information sheet, the announcements, owners and people, there, it's almost like income attribution rules that you see with the IRS. There's a whole litany of my grandmother, my brother-in-law, my sister, my company, which I was a shareholder or whatever, are not eligible to bid on their own property. And, and there's a second protection, because we just were dealing with this the other day. If, if there, a straw person has to act, comes in, and people have tried to get away with that. I'm bidding for my neighbor, he's giving me the money, but I'm actually trying to speculate as to whether I can buy the property for less than the taxes. But I'm really doing it for the owner. They have to, they have to sign an affidavit that says they're not doing that. And there have been a couple of people prosecuted for that. Another thing too, final to keep in mind, is that if I own other property that has delinquent taxes in Sedgwick County, I can't bid. And the treasurer's office collects money at the sale because people come in, say, I want to register to bid. They put their number, their name in the system, oh, you have three properties, you owe $10,000 of taxes. If they want to bid, they have to pay at the sale. And we do collect a fair amount of taxes for people that want to bid at the sale. They have to clear their properties.
Other questions?
I've got one comment about providing this information in different languages. I understand from what you said that we provide it in English, and now possibly in Spanish, and now maybe in Vietnamese, and I can understand that. But USD 259, I think, comes to us and tells us they got like 150 different languages that are spoken just in USD 259. Well, if we now have to provide this in all these 150 different languages, and next we're going to have to worry about Latin and Klingon. Before long, we're going to end up sending out a telephone book.
Which we kind of already do.
So, I don't know. I think if you're going to live in our country, maybe at some point, we're going to have to decide on exactly what language that we need to have for our legal language. Well, that's just a comment.
To follow up on that comment, I had a court hearing about a month ago. I needed a translator to come in. I hadn't seen her in probably 10 years, but she's the one that the courts generally use and her company and her translators. And I had mentioned to her, I had, hey, I haven't really seen you in a while. She goes, I have so many people working for me because they do translation for 118 different languages, just in our county court system. And so, I agree, it would, it'd be really hard to keep up with all of those, but we do try to keep up with the vast majority of, the bulk of the different languages, like Spanish and possibly Vietnamese.
Good. But that being said, I was over at Envision this past week at the opening of the new facility that they've got over there. And they did ask me an interesting question, and they were willing to help. If, if people were identified as blind or visually impaired, they offered to provide things like our tax notices and so forth in Braille, so that we could send those out. So it's something that we may want to consider in the future if, I don't know how we would get information that these people needed in Braille or not, but they did offer over at Envision to help us out with those type of things. And if we get to that point, maybe we need people, if they want something in Vietnamese or Spanish or Klingon, that we send out the notice the way that they wanted. Well, thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Mr. Yost, did you have anything that you wanted to add?
I'm going to add.
All right. Linda, did you have anything you need to add? And Sheriff's, other ones involved, you got anything that you need to add to this? Okay. Well, thank you for the presentation. Mr. Manager, do we have any other presentations today?
That's it.
That's it?
And remember, next week, there'll be OCC meeting in North Africa.
Okay. Anyone from the staff have anything that they want to add today? Any of our electeds have anything they want to add today? Very good.